You lucked out Valerie. So it is seven P M. I'm gonna start the hearing right away so we can move on. Uh this is the agenda for the public here regarding the proposed F Y twenty twenty four budget. For the city of Marneer today's Tuesday, April nine, and this virtual hearing is being held um starting at seven P M. I'd like to call to order Valerie Woodrow.
I'm here.
Luke Chesek.
Here.
Danielle Carter.
Here.
And uh when Jared joins in, um put it on the chat so I would like Melissa could write it down, okay? Alright, so moving on to item number two, review of the agenda. The mayor council will review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. So Luke, can you go ahead and give us a read through of just the virtual hearing, please? Luke?
Sorry, I'm on mute. Uh this is the agenda for the public hearing regarding the proposed F Y twenty five budget. Uh for Tuesday, April ninth, twenty twenty four. It's a virtual hearing at seven P M. One, call to order. Two, review of agenda. Three, public hearing regarding proposed fiscal year twenty five budget. Four, public comment. Five, adjournment.
Alright, thank you so much. You guys have the agenda in front of you. Because we are uh binded with the things that we need to have for this meeting, nothing basically could be deleted. So Melissa's looking at me like, don't do anything. Thank you, Meli. Alright, perfect. So we're gonna move on to item number three, public hearing regarding proposed fiscal year twenty twenty five budget. Uh can you put in the rules, Meli, for public hearing? So that I could read them through? Thank you. The mayor council invited and welcome comments in public meetings, the mayor um or preceding officer to recognize you. Please introduce yourself, first and last name for recording purposes, and give the name of your street and block number. I need forty three hundred block of thirty fourth street. Thank you, Jared, for making an entrance.
Sorry.
Okay, it's fine. Please indicate in the chat whether you would like the mayor to read your comment or you will speak on your comment. Public comments have a limit of three minutes per speaker, otherwise agreed upon by the mayor. While speaking, please maintain a courteous tone and avoid personal attacks. If you wish to lodge a complaint about the performance of conduct of any city employee, please bring your concerns to the attention of the city manager, who will look into your matter and respond to you. As the courtesy tool of the residences businesses, the council requests that speakers not use a specific address of names of individuals when describing a situation or making a complaint or making a comment. Noting the block is preferred over specific address, address. Can you move it up, Meli, please? And just a reminder, this um courtesy um blurb that I just read extends to mayor and council as well, per our mayor and council rules. So I ask that you please um handle the quorum for the meeting, and this meeting is just to address um the hearing for the budget for F Y twenty five. Meli, can you move it? Um can you move it back to the agenda? Thank you, Meli. Alright, perfect. So if I have somebody to speak on behalf of our public regarding to our twenty twenty five budget, if you are on the chat, name, last name, block number, add it to it so that way I could call on you. If you wanna just make a comment, just put read, um you could put read on it as well, okay? So you know what? Since this is a part of the public hearing, Melissa, let me notice, um Ron Wilson, you're here with us, right?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so can you go ahead and just read the tax yield as as we have agreed upon so far?
Sure. Melissa, can you bring that up? Okay, can you scroll down some more? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay, so for um fiscal year twenty five, um the proposed budget keeps our uh real estate uh tax rates unchanged. So our rate for residential and single-family homes will be seventy five cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. The rate for apartments.
Hi, uh Ron, give me one second. Uh can we answer the question? Shut their mic, please, if you're not opening, because we're hearing a lot of feedback. Thank you, guys. So go ahead, Ron.
Okay, so the rate for apartments and multifamily housing will be eighty six cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. The rate for commercial real estate will be seventy nine cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. The rate for industrial um property will be seventy nine cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. And the rate for townhouses will be seventy five cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. Okay, the business personal property tax uh will be unchanged at ninety nine cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. The railroad and public utility tax will be two dollars and seventy five cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value, and that's unchanged. And the vacant developed property tax will be two dollars and fifty cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value, and that's unchanged. And those are our tax rates for for uh fiscal twenty five.
Thank you, Ron. I realized my mic was muted.
Okay.
But thank you so much for submitting that information. The next step I'm gonna ask you, Ron, there's a couple of things we asked for you to ask as minor like footnotes and descriptions since we last met. Can you go ahead and and we and highlight those and show how they show on the budget as well? If you come up with that?
Sure, I'll be glad to. Melissa, can you scroll to the um administrative services section of the budget? Okay, if you would scroll down a ways. There we go. So the change that we were asked to make is to add money uh to um a new line. Uh well, it was changed. It was called Juneteenth. Now it's called Juneteenth. Black History Month Afro-Caribbean Festival. That's line fifty five thirty four. Um we changed that line from one thousand in the previous version to five thousand in this version. And to find that four thousand dollars, we took money from um excuse me, I'm trying to find the line item. Um oh, fifty six forty eight, the Police Advisory Board was reduced from two thousand to five hundred. And then fifty six forty nine Rent Stabilization Board was reduced from two thousand to five hundred. And then uh line fifty five fifty three Recreation Program was reduced from ten thousand in the previous version to nine thousand in this version. So the total for community activities within administrative services remains unchanged at ninety five thousand dollars.
Uh the notes in the bottom that were um edited as well.
Yes, that um Melissa, if you would scroll to the uh public work section uh down to the end. Okay, so we had a footnote um that uh that street resurfacing uh was to be paid by Safe Streets for all grants for fiscal twenty five and uh future years. So we clarified that, and it now says uh fiscal twenty five through fiscal twenty nine. That's five years, and that's the grant period.
Okay, thank you so much, Ron.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll leave it like that because we do have a budget work session after this, but I wanted to make sure we're on the same page of things that we're asked to um add. And that we like, you know, um we're collectively there. Alright, so Ron, thank you so much. Kamali, the whole entire team, because I know you guys have been moving this along. So two things to notice, like the footnotes were added as well, and there was no change at the end of the line, at the end of the bulk overall. It was just money move around even within the same section. So therefore, the whole long list that that Luke read last time, it still applies. Uh nothing has changed uh within the sum totals of everything. And in saying that, uh please be aware that our budget is ridiculously tight. We are not uh increasing taxes, but it is beyond tight at this mo- at this moment. So that's the reason why we're being very cautious with every penny that that we see um in this budget, okay? Alright, perfect. Can you go back to the agenda? So there was some of the things that are added. I'm gonna open it up to the public comment, please. Um I just read you guys the whole entire thing, right? So if you guys need to speak, put it on the chat, name, last name, block and street number, forty three hundred block of thirty fourth, just an example. Um so that way I could call upon you if you would like to speak in this section. So um Jared with a D, do you have any but any comments on Facebook? Okay, and I don't see anything in our chat neither. Okay? Alright, so I would like to move to item number five, adjournment of the meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's probably moved. I'll second it. Any discussion? Objection, attention, hearing none. Our public uh hearing for F uh for fiscal budget twenty five has come to an end. Thank you guys so much, and we're gonna move on to the next meeting. This is an agenda for the proposed F Y twenty five budget work session of the Mayor and City Council for the City of Marneer. It's a virtual meeting for today, Tuesday, April nine, following our public hearing. So I'm gonna call you guys in order once again for the record. Um I have Jared Stoffes.
Here.
Valerie Woodrow.
I'm here.
Danielle Carter.
Here.
Luke Chesek.
Here.
Alright, we have a full quorum again for both meetings. Alright, now we're gonna go ahead and review the agenda. Luke, can you please, as our vice mayor, can you review the agenda, please?
Sure, this is the agenda of the proposed F Y twenty five budget work session of the Mayor and Council. It's a virtual work session taking place Tuesday, April ninth, twenty twenty four, following the public hearing we just had. Items for discussion, one is call to order, two is review of the agenda, three is discussion on proposed F Y twenty five budget, and four is adjournment.
Thank you so much. Alright, any items do you wish to? Nothing's gonna be deleted because it's by by mandate that we have to have those items. But anything needs to be added? Nope. So we are moving on with the agenda that we have in front of us. Item number three is discussion on proposed fiscal year F Y twenty twenty five budget. The mayor council had discussion to propose F Y twenty twenty five budget. Um because there hasn't been no changes, you already heard uh from our financial consultant um Ron Wilson, when it comes to the things that we did ask for them to change, and they went ahead and submitted. The other thing to make note uh for mayor and council as well as the community, I have asked that the the document that we have for ARPA, although we're not gonna vote on it because we vote differently for that, is added to the glossary of um the budget and basically tucked up at the end of the budget. So that way, in future years, when um other members of council or staff are wondering how we did so much things with our budget, they're fully aware that this document exists, and this is how we spend that um all of our funding on it as well. So it'll be more like an information document at the end. So we will not be voting on the document itself as part of the budget, but it'll be included in the budget since it's been previously voted on its own, okay? So council, just be aware. So when you receive your final copy, that's also gonna be added. It's gonna be more like a clean copy that is gonna show the things that were or money already utilized and the things that are being uh worked on. So it's gonna be at least two different categories, alright? Okay, so I um so again, we are not, we're staying taxes the same. We're not increasing, we're not decreasing. And our budget is as tight as we can possibly make it without increasing any taxes. Alright, big thank you to all of our whole entire team because they've been doing a lot of grand writing that has helped us. Um the infrastructure bill, the S S for all bill that has severely helped us to be able to um do so much. But remember, for S S for all, we do have a mandatory twenty percent match every year for the next five years that we are um responsible for, okay? Alright, so I'm gonna go to council. How do you call it? Um if you have anything on the uh budget, and then I'm gonna open it up, um well, I'll go ahead and open up to the community because I think they just missed, how do you call it, um they just missed a hearing. Alright, Tony, so let me go to council first, and then I'm gonna open it because um we uh it's not, the hearing was about thirteen minutes ago, okay? Alright, council members, uh Jared Stoffes, anything regarding the budget?
Hope I just wanted to thank staff and everyone for putting together a great budget this year. I know we were able to continue to work without raising taxes uh while a lot of costs, staff and projects have continued to grow. Um you know, we're able to keep our budget similar and then work with the response feedbacks and some of the staff. The uh feedback. And thanks again to everyone for uh all these opportunities. They're pulling in new money on S S four A and a lot of state grants that are allowed. Uh without having to put that program on.
Thank you so much, Jared. Um Valerie?
Um yeah, thank you. I um I echo what Jared said. I mean, this is a budget that's uh very comprehensive. It's got a lot in there, and I'm looking forward to um spending our tax dollars wisely. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Danielle, followed by Luke.
Yeah, um thanks a lot. I um am in emailing uh the city uh manager. I'm still trying to find a way that we can get some money in the budgets from somewhere for the uh Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department. Otherwise, the rest of the budget, I like it. Thank you.
Luke? You're mute, Luke.
Sorry.
Happened to you today as well.
Yeah. I wanna say thank you to Ron. Um since you've come on board, um our budgets every year get easier and easier for us as policymakers to interact with and pass, and that takes a lot of stress um off my plate, and I just really appreciate that. Um and I know Mr. Kamali has a big role to play in that, and I know all staff members, Melissa, everybody else who um works with Mr. Kamali on what their department's budget's gonna be. They this this process starts in early fall um uh with all of you, and so I just appreciate all the work that comes in. I am just like, I have never had a budget like this um where there was so little work for us elected officials to do, and I think that is such a great um acknowledgement of the work that staff is doing. Priorities that we have talked about and talked about are reflected in the budget. Um grants that we have needed in order to supplement the priorities, the expensive priorities we have that we can't really afford unless we were to raise taxes on everyone are getting met. Um and that's all due to staff and just so happy, so appreciative. Um I think my family is appreciative that I am not figuring out how we need to balance a budget um and 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 meet the priorities that we all have. So just big, big thank you.
Thank you so much. So um I definitely would like to echo the big thank you to the staff. I know that people don't realize that, yes, we put a calendar out in, I think we approved it back in November, December, right? But prior to that, the whole entire team is working to make sure that um they're communicating with the committees, that things are being submitted, that legally we're buying and everything we need to do, down to like the date and time that um we have to, how do you call it, have these meetings. There's a lot of back, you know, information that happens that people real don't realize that it's not just showing up to the meeting, but it's heavily moving on. I definitely wanna take the rest of council for making sure you're being very flexible because the reality is like, you know, right now, we couldn't even find ten thousand dollars. We have to wait, you know, through the process. So uh Luke as well, thank you, I said this before, for making sure that you were very flexible and understanding that at this moment, ten thousand dollars were not gonna come up thin air. They're they're just not there, you know? And along when we go, how do you call it, through the process of like figuring out where we're at later on the season, we will work through them, you know, and this is the reason why we said there are line items in there. And the mentality that I think at one point was, it's like you have to spend every penny in your line item needs to change because the reality is like this is how we're able to do additional things uh through the year as we go ahead and like, you know, figure out um where we have balanced or where we have gotten grants somewhere along the line to be able to upset some of the cost. Um Ronkey, do me one favor before you're out. Um can you let us know so that way people realize how much in grants we're bringing in? Uh was the budget, the general budget um in comparison to what the grants makes this budget to be? Because I think that's very important for people to understand that it's a big difference um what we're bringing in in grants alone. Go ahead.
Sure, yeah, well, Melissa, if you just scroll to the bottom of the general funds um pages. So we uh in our operating budget, that that's the non-grant. Um we have uh nine million, six hundred and seventy one thousand dollars. We have another four point nine million dollars of of anticipated grant funding for the year. So that's a a fifty percent increase over the regular operating budget. Uh that's a very significant amount. And um you know, I I I give all the credit to all of the members of the staff who are working um very hard on finding that grant funding for us. It makes a big difference.
So thank you so much, Ron. And same thing goes for the rest of staff from from every of them. They're all looking for grants, but I wanted to make sure that this was on the record for people to understand that this is the reason why we haven't increased taxes in in so many years because we are definitely working really hard. And you're talking about almost five million dollars worth of um grants coming in, and we're still looking for more obviously. Had that money not been there, I will tell you, we wouldn't have been able to do it. And down to the ARPA money, we like several of us went to lobby and fought to make sure that that money happened, the infrastructure money happened. So when we attend all these meetings and stuff like that, the team goes out there to collect information, talk to the right people, and apply in order to make sure this happened because I'll tell you this, we have been able to do so much mainly because we have been working um above and beyond to make sure that we bring the resources and follow through. Because grants sometimes might seem like a little easy to get, but it is the reporting that kills a lot of people, and we have a good record at not just like, you know, working on the grants, but also on the reporting to return. So that's a lot of the heavy lifting that the staff also has to do um when it comes to putting these big packages of grants, but also at the same time um following through with dotting our i's and crossing our t's to make sure that they know that any money that we um get is accounted for, and it is put where it's being um said it is, and then we're reporting it back. And that's the reason why, if you notice, with ARPA, we go we go down to numbering every single discussion we have to make sure that if later on we get audit or information seek, you literally could turn the whole entire package. So we're taking this um going above and beyond things that are being asked to make sure we're covered, okay? So I'm gonna open it up to the community, but staff, thank you so much. You definitely have made our life a lot easier. And I know, Mr. Kamali, um as well, you have a good group that you have put together, and you definitely do a great job at um leading and making sure that what we are seeking when it comes to our priorities and everything else, um is reflected in the in the budget, okay? Alright, so I'm gonna open it up to the floor. I have uh so remember first, last name, block number, and street. Tony, uh the floor is yours. Go ahead.
Thank you. Tony George, thirty three hundred block of Rhode Island Avenue. Just curious about the money taken from the Police Review Advisory Board to fund Juneteenth uh Black History Month. It's two people, um Sharnette and I are, you know, on the Police Review Advisory Board and have been advocating for funding for Juneteenth and these activities, but our our budget just got gutted. Then the city spends thirty thousand dollars on the throne. I'm curious how often in uh that got used. That my understanding was it was to address problem with unhoused people uh having to relieve themselves, and the throne requires a credit card or a debit card, I think, to access. And then in the Police Department budget, there's still the issue of salary compression that's not being addressed.
Thank you, Tony. Um I thank you for your comments. So I I will tell you a couple of things. We don't have the money to be able to fund many things, right? And it was taken off out of uh the rent stabilization. It was taken out of some of the rec committee and also some of Police Advisory Board. The role of the Police Advisory Board, we're gonna be discussing it in the next work uh work session. So that could be um addressed there. This is what we have right now for the budget. We don't wanna increase any taxes, and this is the way for us to cover the things that the city's already covering anyways, but it was asked by the community to make sure that it reflect um in the document what we've been doing, and I will tell you this. Um it doesn't all reflects everything else we do, but at least we wanna make sure the amounts uh were there. So now they're there, and uh the events are gonna be um held by the city. So thank you so much. I am sorry, my phone went in. Okay, perfect. Moving on to the next um comment. Sharnette Robinson, fifty uh three thousand five hundred Perry Street. Um Sharnette, uh you wanna speak or do you need me to read this? I need to know what you want me to do. Turn it.
Hi, yes, I can speak on it.
Go ahead.
Sharnette Robinson, thirty five hundred block of Perry Street. Um I just think that funding should remain with the uh P R A B and Um I just think that funding should remain with the uh PRAB and the Recreation Committee. These are programs that are made up of residents, and they are programs that residents were able to provide to the city, not the city providing those programs, especially Black History Month as well as Juneteenth. Uh unless there is going to be a committee set up for by residents to be able to provide those services to the city. And I also think that funding could be taking taken away from the forty-five thousand that was given to the business community, just in case uh they uh are not getting the same amount of customers or what have you while the work is being done up there. We're right over here in back of the work being done on the city hall. We have experienced an uptick in rodents, and uh we have been inconvenienced as residents, but we didn't get anything. So the business community should not take precedence over commu- uh residents that are here paying taxes. Also, the money that was taken uh given to the CDC, that's money given to another business, not residents. So I think it's very unfair to treat residents in this manner and just take money away from programs that residents for the last three years have been doing and just say, oh, now the city's gonna provide these services or what have you. I don't I don't think that that's really uh being fair to residents. Yes, we asked for that money to go to uh those particular programs, but those are programs that were being ran by residents and money uh taken out, excuse me. And and money, uh you know, the um different programs that that the uh members of the Recreation Committee and other people were doing. So I think it was very unfair the way that this money was just taken away from these type of programs and also the fact of saying that, oh, now the city's gonna run these programs, and residents aren't gonna have uh that funding to run them there themselves. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, okay. All right, uh just uh another point that was brought up is like, you know, the Police Advisory Board was overfunded last year. And for the purpose that is legally serving, we don't need the extra additional funds. So the funds haven't even like nowhere near um been used this year. And as we said, none of us wanna sit here and raise taxes, so we had it to like move stuff around to make sure that we cover the items. The other thing is like um to clarify, the Gateway CDC, it is run by um residents of Mount Rainier. These are not people outside the outside Mount Rainier. And also um the people benefiting are residents of Mount Rainier. So this is not an outside entity. It's actually an entity that was created and funded here in Mount Rainier. So I wanna make sure that um that is clear and even down to the artists that are are local to to this area, okay? Thank you so much. All right, so now that it's clear, and I think at the end of the day, the city also makes a decision on what it is. And I think that we've heard multiple calls for the city to run the projects, you know, so that way we're equitable when it comes to the city running other projects as well. All right, and in saying that, also means the city was not putting money and effort, but it it is what it is now at this point. Okay, all right. So I don't have nobody else that's new uh that would like to speak. Um can Jared, anybody on Facebook? Jared with a D. All right, perfect. Thank you so much. All right, so this um, all right, council, can I get the agenda back up, Meli? All right, thank you so much. All right, council, is there anything else you guys wish to add, aside from our wonderful thank you to the staff that we all did? Um we definitely appreciate your work and appreciate you guys being patient through this process. And thank you to the various uh committee members who submitted all their information on time, making it easier for us to be able to have these discussions. And the one uh per our rules, the committees do speak to the city manager and present their proposed budget. Not everybody got everything they want because they fully understood that nobody wants to raise taxes. We're trying to make sure we maintain um the same services, but every year realistically, everything goes up. And if we want the same services, um we need to find creative ways. And I think ground writing has been great, but it also takes a lot of the staff to follow through to um to mitigate and make sure that we get reimbursement funds out of that, okay? All right, so council, we're good? Yes? All right, so I would like to put uh seeing there is no other new comments. Uh can we go ahead and move on to item number four? Uh German of this wonderful work session meeting.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's probably move and second, any discussion? Um I will tell you guys that in just one thing, April twenty-four, we are due for the vote. And if voted, we'll be able to like pass this on the first round. And then the whole team could work and focus on the audit to make sure it's submitted on time. And they're wrapping up this uh last few months of sessions and everything they need to do before uh the June, as well as everything we need to do, okay? All right, so uh any objections, ascensions? Hearing none. This meeting has come to an end. So thank you, our staff, and also thank you everybody that came to the egg hunt. We have more than six hundred kids and thousands of thousands of eggs, so it was really um really enjoyable. And thank you to the whole entire staff for putting this together and all the great work that's been done before and after. So have a wonderful night. I'm gonna give you guys some time back, council members, and I'm sure your families will heavily appreciate it. And I appreciate you guys um for all the volunteer time you guys put forward. I definitely know I'm not in this alone, so thank you guys so much, okay? Have a good night. Bye. I'm gonna start kicking you guys out so that we guys log out. Bye, take care.